This is our community's house. We are all guests in it here to serve our community. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver, and so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to our regular meeting of council for Monday, February 24th at seven o'clock. I'd like to start off our meeting in a good way, so I've asked councillor Back to read our land acknowledgement.
Thank you. Hey, Little. We respectfully acknowledge the original peoples of these lands and waters, specifically the Slevuhtut, Squamish, and Musqueam, on whose unceded ancestral lands the District of North Vancouver is located. We value the opportunity to learn, share, and serve our community on these unceded lands.
Thank you very much, councillor. Right, council, we have an agenda that's been circulated. Any errors or omissions from the agenda as presented? None? Moved by councillor Forbes, or second around the matter, second by councillor Back, prepared to call the question, all in favor? Contrary minded, motion is carried. We have no sets of minutes that have been included, so we're going to move on right away. I'm going to invite, actually, sorry, we're going to be doing public input first. So at the beginning of any regular meeting of council, we have a period of up to 30 minutes where members of the public can come and raise issues of importance to them, and so members of our community are allowed to speak for about three minutes, and in total, we'll have a period of up to 30 minutes for people to raise their concerns. We have circulated a list ahead of time, and we do have some people signed up to speak to item 8.1 at the item. But we actually have nobody that has signed up to speak at the front end of the meeting on any particular issue. And so if anybody would like to raise an issue of concern, raise your hand either virtually or here in person, and we'll make a space for you. I should say, this meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion, so members of staff, council, and public can participate either virtually or in person to tonight's meeting. At this point, we do have the regrets from both councillors Hanson and councillor Murray. They are not going to be participating in this evening's meeting, so the five of us here present are the council representatives this evening. Would anybody like to address the council meeting? Okay, Dr. Cost. If I need to get you on the microphone, so is it possible to have you come down, and you're welcome to to speak?
Your worship, my name is Corey Cost.
Welcome.
My question is quite simple. Can you speak on both this public input period and the 8.1? Or is it, does 8.1 exclude you from speaking?
Our policy is that you can only speak to one particular item. Have you signed up, I believe, to speak to item 8.1? And I'll call on you. As soon as we're done with the delegation, we'll start to move into that. Thank you so much. Anybody else like to address council? And I see no virtual participants raising their hands. Okay, we're going to carry on with the meeting. I warned you, Murray, that it was going to be about a half hour, but you're up. So at this point, I'm going to welcome Murray Mullard to come and prepare for delegation. So what's different for a delegation rather than a regular input council meeting is delegation is an opportunity for organizations within the community to come and tell us a little more about their operations. They have five minutes to make a presentation, followed by an opportunity for council to ask some clarifying questions and get their responses at the end of that time. And so at this point, I'll turn the floor over to Murray Mullard, North Shore Community Resources. Welcome.
Thank you, your honour, and your worship, I should say. And councillors, appreciate very much the opportunity to meet with you this evening. My name is Murray Mullard. I'm the executive director of North Shore Community Resources and have been so for almost 10 years. So time flies when you're having fun, to be honest, in serving the community. So I wanted to start out with a little bit of an overview about our vision and our mission. You know, I was counting before the meeting, we have about 20 different programs and subprograms that serve a variety of the community. There's a lot going on at North Shore Community Resources. And how we sort of summarize this is in our mission statement, which ultimately, any of our programs focus on wellbeing. We're trying to enhance individual and community wellbeing, and we do that through a variety of pathways, through social connections. We know that when people are connected to each other, when there are relationships of reciprocity, assisting each other, we know that that enhances wellbeing. We know that when people have knowledge and information and are empowered to live the lives they want to live, they have enhanced wellbeing. And we know that when community members contribute to their community and participate in the community, they enhance both their own wellbeing and the wellbeing of the greater community. So that's what our mission tries to do when we look at the variety of different programs and services we have. We have a diverse board of 13 various individuals living throughout the North Shore, over 36 staff members who speak over 10 different languages. We have Farsi-speaking individuals, of course, and that makes a big difference to the Farsi-speaking community because we can serve them better. We have almost 200 volunteers providing 7,000 hours of service. It's a tremendous contribution to helping us, but then helping the community as well. So who and who do we serve? Well, we serve the community from Lions Bay to Deep Cove, including members of our two prominent First Nations, the Squamish and Slevuhtut, all ages, from the very youngest to the very oldest, primarily lower income, but not necessarily. There are a variety of programs that don't have any income tests at all. Over 43,000 client contacts, many of these are District of North Vancouver residents and organizations. So we have a variety of program areas. I don't have enough time to go into detail about them all. We have an annual report that is online that people can look at that provide a summary, but just a very quick overview. We focus on children and families, often focused on childcare, providing and assisting families to find childcare. We work with seniors in a variety of ways. We have a Better at Home program that helps seniors live in their homes by providing them a variety of services. We have a caregiver support program. We have a seniors one-stop program with with community connectors that provide deep casework and assisting individuals in the community. We have a community legal services program, basic necessities of life law, I call it, things like helping tenants, people with family law issues, and then community engagements or information North Shore, our volunteer North Shore to help encourage people to volunteer and find volunteer opportunities. Our Democracy Cafe, you'll be familiar with our North Shore Young Civic Forum that we held here earlier, well, in 2024, in the spring of 2024. Our Community Housing Action Committee, you're familiar with that as well. So a variety of things that we do. A quick financial snapshot, a variety of sources of funding, municipal, federal, provincial funding are important. Variety of foundations and grants. We're a charity, so we receive charitable donations for our work as well. And of course, the expenditures that go with that, primarily salaries, the people that work for us. Some things that we value. So we really value collaboration, this idea that we're going to work with other not-for-profits. We're going to work with the municipal partnerships to provide good value for the for the community. We provide, all these various programs and services allow us to provide wraparound services. So someone might come in for childcare, but in talking to them, we learn that they maybe need some help from a family law advocate, or maybe they need their taxes done. So that allows us to really serve people in multiple ways. And finally, we really value impact. So to just give you an example of the many programs we have, it's tax time. We have last year provided over 800 clients with assistance, lower-income folks doing their taxes. That has a huge impact. Over $300,000 in refunds returned to their pockets, a huge poverty prevention, poverty reduction program. And now we're working with members of the Squamish Nation to assist their members to ensure that they have their taxes done as well. So lots is happening. You know, five minutes is never enough to really share all the things we do, but I appreciate your time tonight and look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Back.
Thank you. I will move receipt of the report.
Thank you. Is there a second or first seat? Councillor Ma, councillor Back, go ahead.
Thank you, Murray. Thanks so much for coming. I have always valued the work that North Shore Community Resources does for our community and helping such a huge number of people. Just that one program alone, the income tax service, I didn't realize was something that you did in such a big way. 800 clients, that's an incredible, incredible number. I value all of your different programs. I'm quite familiar with the North Shore Young Civic Forum. I really appreciated being involved in that one, I think, pretty much since the beginning because it's involving young people in civic government and getting them connected to their local governments on the North Shore. And I just think that's a really valuable program. But I was going to talk about some of the challenges as we look to the future, changing demographics on the North Shore. What programs are sort of most in demand right now, and would you say are, you know, experiencing the most growth maybe? And what are some of your challenges?
Yeah, so always a good question. I mean, with an aging demographic, our seniors' programs are always in high demand. And we know, you know, in current times, there are a lot of folks who are challenged for for income and in other ways, and housing, as you know, a great challenge for communities to be building the housing that we need. So certainly those seniors' programs, the housing advocacy we do is very important. Education around housing is really important. I mean, you mentioned the forum. You know, one of the things that social services agencies do is they tend to serve younger, both children and their families, and then seniors, but we often miss out that that sort of younger adult age, and we need to plug them into community. And so the forum is a really great opportunity for us to do so. But you know, the tax clinic, there's, you know, we almost don't have enough, it's run by volunteers. So the actual provision of the refund or the tax preparation work is done by volunteers. We almost don't have enough volunteers to be able to meet the demand there. So that's an ongoing challenge. So, you know, I would say, you know, for the community generally, support us through volunteering with us. Support us through your donations, and that helps us to do this work.
Thank you. And just as an organization, how can the district be, how can we support you more?
Yeah, well, I, you know, I'm just showing this last slide. I mean, and this is a photo from the forum event that we took here. We have about 30 younger adults come and learn with you, and it's tremendous contribution that you give us just of your time and knowledge and learning that they can plug in and and make relationships with you and learn what civic government at the local level is. So that's tremendous. We continue to, we'll continue to do that program, and we hope you'll continue to support us through that. You know, you support us financially. We appreciate that. In the childcare area, you provide us with a core grant. We appreciate that. We get a community grant to do a variety of work, so all of that is important. And we're always trying to find ways that we can work with you and support each other in the various challenges that you have. Big, big job you have in making sure that communities are run civically in a good way. So, and I reach out to you and chat with you and from time to time. So I enjoy that relationship, and we really appreciate the relationship that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ma?
Thank you, Murray. And, you know, I didn't realize you've been with the organization for 10 years.
Yeah, it's almost 10.
Yep. But I appreciate the work that you do, and, you know, I've gotten to know the organization through Shaq and also the Young Civics Forum. And councillor Back asked some of the questions that I thought about. There's one thing that I'm sure it's on your radar with the potential redevelopment of Cap Mall. Are you starting to look at that yet in terms of?
Oh, yeah, no, it's been on our, it's been on our radar for quite a while. Well, as you know, it's, it falls within the city of North Vancouver. So they'll be responsible for ultimately working with Quadrail, the owners of the mall. We've been in that space for, our office space in Capelano Mall for over 25 years. So it's been a great office for us because it's so accessible to the public, centrally located on the North Shore. It's on major bus lines, so people who don't have a car can get there. You know, it's interesting because Walmart is right there, and you know Walmart is an important place where people shop. And so it's actually dovetails with a lot of the clientele that we have. So it's, so we're working with Quadrail, working with the city to make sure that we continue to be there as they look at redeveloping the mall. It's a place where we want to be, and yeah, so that, that time, it will take time, I think, to for the city to work through that development with Quadrail, but we look forward to being partners with the city and Quadrail into the future.
Okay. Glad you all have a home in the future.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Yeah, I think I was just going to say, I think that process is going to be five to seven years, medium term. I don't know that, I think they're just in the early stages of that design work, and so more of a medium term, I mean, it's obviously concerned today, but it's, it's, it's probably, you probably will be able to use the space for at least that amount of time, I imagine. Councillor Pope?
Thanks for your presentation, and thank you for all the work that you do for this community. I was especially appreciative this year of the housing advocacy that you and your colleagues did this year as we worked hard on getting supportive housing passed. And as you know, that's going to be so important to the community going forward because so many people are suffering and it's getting worse. So I'm wondering if you can elaborate a little bit on what you do for seniors. The, I'm curious, in the North Shore Better at Home program?
Sure. Yeah, I would love to, love to do that, and thank you. And of course, Dawn Peters worked with you from the Community Housing Action Committee for so many years, but we have a new guy, Jacob Isaac, who I think has been before you, has he not? So, so a young, young man who's got a planning background, so he looks forward to continuing to work with you as well. On our senior side, yeah, there's a variety of programs. So the Better at Home program is effectively provincially funded through the United Way, and it's a suite of seven non-medical services that assist residents, seniors, to remain in their homes. So the research shows that where seniors can remain in community where they have relationships and support, they do, they do better. Their wellbeing is enhanced. And so the Better at Home program seeks to provide this suite of seven services, so things like light housekeeping, like, like cleaning, light yard work, light home repairs, transportation to essential medical appointments and other services. We assist seniors buy food and get groceries. Friendly visiting. We know that one of the huge, the huge challenges for the wellbeing of seniors is social isolation. And so just making sure that they have connections and people in the community they can speak to and talk to and connect with is a really big part of that program as well. So that, that's the Better at Home program. Do you want me to talk about caregiver support?
I'm curious about that because I think when your organization first started up, you were strictly like a referral for resources. I remember calling when, when I was looking for childcare and I got, I got a list. This was quite a while ago now, like 16 years. I got a list of places where, that were taking children in childcare. And, and that was kind of about it. And so are you more than a resource referral now, like with the Better at Home program? Are you actually, are the people you're paying actually going out to the homes of the seniors?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So even when you probably contacted them many years ago, we probably did more than maybe just information and referral. We've certainly done that. We've always done that. You know, we've always connected people to other community organizations that can support them, but you know, for example, our seniors one-stop program, which is a program to assist seniors, but also families who have a senior that they need to help with. It could be medical health matters, it could be financial matters, it could be housing. So, so that program assists seniors and their families to plug into whatever information and resources they need. But in addition to that, we now have what are called community connectors or navigators, effectively providing casework for those seniors. So it will include phone calls, it will include emails, it will include writing letters to make sure that whatever the issue or problem that the senior or their family arrives with, we can help them solve it. And we have Farsi-speaking community connectors, right? So, so no, there's in-depth work. It's, we're not simply a place for a five-minute conversation and then a referral. Sometimes that might be appropriate, but in many of our programs, we're doing deep work with, with our clients. Our legal program, for example, provides not only information referral, but legal advice, legal representation for, to tenants, for example, where they're experiencing challenges with their landlords. So, you know, many of our programs do very in-depth client work to assist them with their problems, to enhance their wellbeing through empowerment or knowledge or, or social connections or participation, as our mission states.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question.
Councillor Forbes?
Thank you, your worship. Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you very much for this report package. You do an awful lot of good work, and I don't think it's as well-known as it should be because you do an awful lot in a lot of areas. I was going to ask you about the seniors one-stop program, but I think you've answered that. I just wanted to ask, you say it's primarily lower income. Is there a threshold where you won't take people?
So depending on the program, so for example, our legal, our community legal services program, we actually provide a minimum amount of time to anyone regardless of income, but for those that we're going to provide more in-depth legal advice to, there will be an income threshold. For example, you know, our caregiver support program, remember that there are thousands on the North Shore caregivers who are working to support their loved ones, their family members, their friends. It's a, it's a huge, a huge challenge for them. We don't have an income test for that. We just support whoever walks in the door and needs that help. So it will depend on the program, and program by program will make, will depend on that program.
Okay. Thank you very much for all the work you do.
Yeah, well, thank you for noting. I mean, yeah, we don't have trouble. Clients find us. So from the marketing perspective, that's not a challenge. I do think we're, and we're working on improving the community's awareness of our programs more broadly. Perhaps those that aren't necessarily going to need our services right now, but maybe will in the future helps with our fundraising and our charitable activities as well. So, so that's work we're, we're working on this year actually as well.
That would be a good idea to get it early, and then they can just, they know where to go when they really need it.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you. I see no further speakers. I just make a quick comment myself. You know, it's always been a lot of fun to participate in the, in the youth forum, you know, whether it's addressing municipal 101-type questions, you know, how the municipality operates. I've always been happy to participate in that. And do you have a next event planned? Is there something else coming up that we can, we can assist with?
Yeah, I was just sharing with your staff, we had hoped to actually launch it again this spring because it's been a year or so. A couple of things, we, we started a little bit late on the promotion side, so we've decided to pause it to make sure we have enough applicants. We like a large applicant pool to from, to choose from when we choose the, the actual participants. And secondly, I know it's a busy year for municipalities this year with all the OCP work that you're doing, and I mean, just generally speaking. So we're, we want to make sure that all the municipalities, because it's, it's all municipalities that we work with, and our forum participants visit all the municipal halls and work with all the staff and councils across the North Shore. And so we want to make sure that everyone's available as well. So we might have a bit of a pause either later this fall or maybe early next year, but don't worry, we'll be back knocking on your door. But it's been great for you to be part of that. I know, Mayor Little, you've been there for that, and a variety of your councillors have as well, and I can tell you, I mean, we appreciate it, but I can tell you, the participants, the younger adults. You know, I just ran into someone who was part of our first forum five years ago, and she told me how much of a difference it made to her in understanding how local government works, but also the relationships she's built with her fellow participants, but also municipal staff and councils as well. So, so it's been a, we think it's a valuable program. We'll probably send out a survey to you. And so when you get that in your inbox, please let us know how, give us some feedback about the program.
Well, if we can, if it lines up with the schedule, it's something that we definitely look forward to. My predecessor was a teacher, and so going into those education opportunities, I know he really went into it a lot, and I got to tell you, it's, it's a lot of fun. And so I've been enjoying going, doing that, or the clerks program, the local government program through Capelano University, having people come out and just ask questions about local government is something that, don't worry about how busy we are, that kind of recharges the batteries a little bit. And so, so we'd be happy to support it if that comes around again.
Well, thank you. It's, it's part of our Democracy Cafe program, and what are we but a democracy? So, and you embody that. So thank you for all the work you do as well.
Council, motion received and moved and seconded. Happy to call the question. All those in favor? Contrary minded, motion is carried, and the delegation is received on behalf of council. Thank you very much for your delegation today.
Thank you to you all.
Right, council. So we have, onto the regular business then at this point. I did float around some potential ideas for consent agenda. This is where we, if everybody generally agrees to move these items forward, then we don't spend the council time discussing about it. They get, they get passed. We have a number of items that are up for adoption or for issuance or even grants. And so I'd like to propose a consent agenda of items 8.2, 8.4, 8.5. Those are all up for adoption, so there's no debate at adoption. Item 8.6, issuance, 8.8, grant approval, and 8.9, a grant approval. Would any member of council like to withdraw any one of those items from consent agenda consideration? Okay, I'll move it. Is there a second or for it? Second by councillor Ma, prepared to call the question. All in favor? Contrary minded, motion is carried. So if you came here for items 82, 84, 85, 86, 88, or 89, we have just taken care of them super quickly. They have passed by the council, so we will spend the rest of our time on the other items. The first item up for consideration is the draft financial plan public input. And I've, I've had some time to consider Dr. Cost's request at the beginning, and what we do is when people come in and speak to council, we sort of ask them, even if they want to talk about five or six different items, we ask them to pick their one most important one to focus their time on. And I, I would really hate to have a situation where our selection of this being the public input night would stop you from speaking about something else that was important to you. And so if your intent was to speak to item 8.1 in both sessions, we'll, we'll address that here. If you would want to talk about another item, I'll make some time for that as well because I, I wouldn't want our consideration of the budget input to stop you from talking about something that was most important to you. When we have the draft financial plan public input evening, it's a little bit different in that normally there is only one speaker for or opposed on a particular item. We do open it up again for multiple people to speak in input to the financial plan. So at this point, I'm going to start seeking public input on this item. The first speaker that I have signed up is Corey Cost. I will ask you to come down to the front here, followed by Eric Anderson, also joining us here in person. Also remind anybody joining us virtually, if you raise your virtual hand once I've gone through these two speakers, we'll be coming to the rest of the room to see if anyone else would like to address the public input. And so again, apologies if I cut you off from speaking about something else that was interesting to you. If it was 8.1 that you just wanted to add additional comments to, we'll, we'll create some time now, but get your microphone on there.
My name is Corey Cost, 2851 Callwood Drive. This is going to be very difficult to get in three minutes, but here we go. This all started off with the agenda being published without this item being on the agenda. Shortly thereafter, unknown to me, there was a new agenda that was issued without any idea that this in fact was a new agenda, and I suggest they should have a new name or version two. And that included this 8.1. But along with that, there's a whole bunch of other webpages that one, for example, on Wednesday, which doesn't have the clause that you can only speak up to the 24th, which is today. So that was confounding. This came out two days later. This came out two days later, they corrected this, you have public input until the 24th. Then in addition to that, public input on the draft listed some details relevant to eight point one, which you are discussing now. This caused me to consult AI on various issues to do with these financial plans. So I loaded up the documents that are available into AI and said, analyze this. And I posed four relevant questions, which I won't repeat here. But Copia's numbers of references were included in the reply by AI. For example, do you view the use of reserve funds as a hidden tax that ultimately is money contributed by the public? Because you're taking a great deal of money, I think 24 million out of that over a period of four, five years. And that's, so that discussion I already sent to counsel, but I have it in hard copy here. Now, I want to go to two little issues that are associated always, and that is park land and how they are funded. So this comes sort of in, in the overall financial plan. And it's got to be remembered and I, that the parks and open space strategic plan allocates four hectares or 10 acres for a thousand people kind of development. And I got a publication from IAI again, surveying the both mostly metro lands, what their standards are. Then comes the latest issue today, which is a plan to have on-street parking charges throughout the community, but more specifically centered on community centers. And that's a, a large number of numbers are in here that are of concern to me. The, the big issue, I think, if you look on page 10 of the the draft financial plan, you see the taxation is 146 million. But I believe that does not include any funds that we sent on the way to metro. So it's a little bit misleading to say that our overall revenue is 146 million, when in fact on the source of funds, you have 61 million for utilities, which I think goes mostly to metro. So the, the way the draft plan is laid out does not really give a fair representation, in my humble opinion, of the big money items that are being spent. So I will leave these documents with you. That exhausts my time.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'm always available for a call. Thank you.
Can you just get a clarification on that? So Mr. Danilak, the utility charges are both local and metro, is that not correct?
That's correct, your worship.
So we also maintain our own pipe and underground infrastructure using our portion of the utility charge. So just because it says utility charge doesn't mean it's entirely going to another taxing authority. We maintain our own infrastructure that connects to Metro's infrastructure as well.
I was just wanting to get at the total cost that people are of this community are paying in terms of taxes. And that's hard to find in here. There is no total sum. Thank you.
Thank you. About that, yes?
When we start our deliberations to offer their comments on the, on the budget.
The, the, the public can, can add their comments at any time, but the only ones that are received up to a certain point get compiled in the list of official public input. Anything received after that point, just it, it comes in, it just, at some point, we just shut it off and say that's been the input. Now, it actually doesn't limit our abilities in like it does in other matters. We don't go into closure on it, like where we can't receive new information. People can give their feedback on the budget and financial plans at any point all year round. It's just when we do it during this time, we do print it out specially as the input officially received. Is that fair?
Thank you, dear worship, that's correct. On March 10th, should a member of the public want to sign up during the public input opportunity at the beginning of a meeting? They can, it's just not a dedicated line item like it is this evening.
Yeah, I think that could have been played out more clearly too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker I have is Eric Anderson, joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're ready, you have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Little and members of council. My name is Eric Anderson and I live at 2589 Dibishai Way. Tonight, I'm not speaking on behalf of any association that I may belong to, but on behalf of a lot of people out there who have not figured out yet what will be happening with the taxes this year, but also in the future. Last week, I attended the North Vancouver Community Association Network meeting at the district hall with Mr. Rick Danilak. Very kindly took the time to explain to interested community leaders what the 2025 financial plan covered. I have to stress that this presentation is absolutely not a reflection on district staff. Mr. Danilak, Danilak made a great presentation, answered many difficult questions and always shows how professionally and dedicated he works. I've known Rick for well over 15 years. From a higher number of staff has now reduced the 2025 increase to our municipal taxes to quote unquote only 5.5%. This may not sound high in view of the inflation figures that we've all suffered from during the last couple of years. However, 5.5% is unsustainable in the long run. Every year we hear that it'll get better in the future. Until of this, we now have the North Shore wastewater treatment plant, whose costs will end up costing North Shore taxpayers an extra $590 per year. An amount that some politicians are already, already telling us will be increased to well over $1,000 per year. The bottom line is, who in their right mind believes any numbers from Metro Vancouver, considering how this project has gone completely out of control? I certainly don't. Back to the DMV's property taxes. I looked at my own taxes, which were about $7,500 in total last year. I live in an average DMV home. If you just quote unquote increased this amount by 5.5% yearly, so without taking the treatment plans higher increases into consideration. This means that in just eight years, my property taxes will be exceeding $12,000 per year. In other words, roughly $1,000 after-tax dollars per month. And in 21 years, the amount with the same yearly increase will have doubled to over $2,000 per month. Will I suffer from this? Probably less than other people, since I started deferring my taxes many years ago, something possible due to my age. So I don't know if that's a good thing. The irony here is that everyone is talking about building, building, building everywhere. Not a lot of politicians seem to care about infrastructure, but that aside, the point is that now, how can you ask the young families that you are approving housing for to pay taxes that are unsustainable in the long run? How can you ask them to pay $1,000 and more per month in the near future? It has to stop and you, counsel, are responsible for this, not your staff. Stop giving in, stop giving in every time special interest groups are looking for the taxpayers to pick up the tab. We've seen many examples of this in the not-so-distant past. It is time to start line budgeting and start cutting when and where possible. It is just not fair to the young families that you pretend to help with housing, where they are left holding the bag of municipal expenses without being able to defer their taxes. Things are tough out there and certainly all workers cannot expect a 5.5% salary increase every year just to keep up with municipal taxes. Thank you.
Your comments, Eric Anderson. Would anybody else like to add their comments at this time? Bob Craver, come on now. And again, for virtual participants, raise your virtual hand, we'll move you over to the panel. Welcome, when you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, your worship. As most of longtime members of council know, I've been doing the finance file for 20 plus years now and much has changed in that time. Some for the better, some for the not so much. In any case, I again want to echo Eric and Corey for their comments about Rick's presentation to the Community Association Network last week. It was, as always, one of the more worthwhile presentations that district staff have put on over the course of the entire year. And this year was definitely no exception. Anyhow, I do have some major concerns concerning the way the taxes are laid out. First of all, I would have far less reservations with the splitting out of utilities and so forth. If that assessment for utilities were going out with the same package as, as the normal district package. Bottom line is utilities are a big part of what the general taxpayer pays for. There is only one taxpayer at the end of the day and I will very much echo Eric in saying that any public figure who thinks that 5%, 5.5% a year as a long-term average going forward is sustainable is not, is simply not paying attention. Bottom line is that's not sustainable long-term. And heaven knows if there's a municipality that cares about the word sustainable, it's got to be DMV. Now, I do think that, I do think that a utility assessment should go out at the same time as the tax notices generally, whether it's on the same piece of paper or a separate piece of paper, doesn't really matter. Bottom line is that this is information that the public very definitely needs to keep on the radar. And frankly, I, like Eric, am, I am very definitely concerned about the massive overrun of the sewage treatment plant. And it's not the only, not the only non-DMV project that's gone over budgets. But the bottom line is, we, we have no guarantee that this number will not substantially escalate going forward. As it is, public utilities are not something we can defer, whether we, whether we're able to defer or not, you can't defer utilities. This is, there's a few details about the book that I'd like to address going forward, but given the time, perhaps I should wrap it up here.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll save my editorializing for when we have the council input session on, on the financial plan. But I did just want to mention on that issue of separating out utility charges. I will say that some of that is born out of frustration. We are doing what we can to keep our increases as a municipality as low as we reasonably can. Metro is projecting 10% increase for the next five years on their side of things, plus the wastewater treatment charges. And so it's, it's very frustrating for us to be the chief spear catcher on, on Metro Vancouver's current financial challenges. And so some of that is our frustration there that we're fighting to keep our taxes lower. And I agree with your comments about the increased amount. It's just a big challenge when Metro's projected expenses for utilities are going up so dramatically fast over the next number of years that breaking it out and communicating the difference is, I think, important. But yes, this is the first year we're doing that and so we'll monitor it and see whether it is something that works smoothly. I see no further speakers virtually or here in person. It's time, would anybody else, we still have time, would anybody else like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go to the, I don't think you needed a, do you need receipt of the public input? Okay, we've, we've completed this particular item and we're going to carry on this evening. The next item up for consideration is item eight point three. This is bylaws eight seven two six. Oh, actually, before we do, can I just check in with Mr. Daniel? Can you just restate the next stage in this process and the dates that are relevant?
Yes, your worship, we're, all our staff will summarize the input that's been received since the start of the period, which was February 12th. And that summary report will be provided through Agenda Addenda this Friday to council. So it has it in advance of council's opening remarks on March 3rd. That is an opportunity to ask staff any other questions that they have before we get to budget deliberations, which is scheduled for March 10th.
Yeah, and so again, just a reminder to council, March 10th is our opportunity to sort of editorialize and come up with our reasons for support or challenges. I would just say again, a reminder, if you have an in-depth question, don't wait until March 10th. Please address it with staff sooner rather than later because it'll be hard to assemble materials on the fly on the 10th. So encourage you to ask your questions ahead of time if they were going to require additional work. Okay, moving on to item eight point three. This is the, this is again, this is an adoption. So this is bylaws eight seven two six eight seven three zero text amendment to CD 136 for 1510 to 1530 Crown Street and 440 Mountain Highway. And while it is an adoption, that means it's not up for debate. It's already been returned from second and third reading. And so I will call the question on adoption or I'll move, move adoption. Is there a second or for adoption? Second by council back, prepared to call the question, all in favor. Contrary minded, motion is carried with Counselor Forbes opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item up for consideration is eight point five. Eight point seven. Right, as Mr. Smith and the team here are getting in position and we're, we're preparing for this. I did just want to say in council's deliberations, we don't have to be specific about the scenario. We're putting a whole bunch of different options on the table tonight so that we're aware of what could be engaged in. And just wanted to be clear about that. So Ms. Atva, do you have some opening remarks this evening?
Thank you very much, your worship. Good evening, your worship, members of council and the public. Thank you so much for this time to come and talk about our official community plan, which is the long-term vision for the District of North Vancouver. And that vision calls for many things such as vibrant neighborhoods, well-designed centers, a place where all people are welcome. And it includes land use statements and designations, which tell us where residential, commercial, industrial, institutional and other uses should be located. This official community plan update is required by the province to be done by the end of the year and it focuses on residential growth, our housing needs over the coming 20 years. Our zoning bylaw will also have to be updated to provide for that growth. And this is a shift, this type of pre-zoning, a major shift from how businesses usually done in the past, where new residential development that helps to advance the OCP is considered on a case-by-case basis. Jason Smith, our senior community planner, will, with your permission, provide the presentation and detail three possible ways or scenarios for the district to grow. Staff are looking for council's feedback and direction to engage with the community, not looking for an endorsement at this point, as has been noticed, noted. As well, the scenarios don't have to stand on their own, they're not mutually exclusive. They could be a hydro, there could be a hybrid of different growth ideas. What scale and where, what is most suitable for the district over the next 20 years? And to finish, the provincial house, the provincial focus here is on housing and we realize that growth will have impacts on our infrastructure, on our transportation, our transit, our utilities and the kinds of amenities that make our communities unique and livable. And there will be, these will present challenges that we cannot resolve on our own at the municipal level. And we know that advocating to senior governments for funding and commitments is something that we will have to continue to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you, Ms. Atva, for those welcoming comments. I am, my name's Jason Smith and I'm happy here to be here tonight to present on the official community plan update. My colleague Jessica Lee is here as well. And also I'd like to introduce Rob Bars, who's a principal with Modus Planning, Design and Engagement, consulting firm that's supporting us in this.
consulting firm that's supporting us in this work as well, and they furnish the, the significant report in terms of the technical detail on how we derive these scenarios. So as was alluded to, there was some significant provincial legislation that was passed in fall of 2023 and the spring of 2024. It had a significant impact on the community planning's work plan. The OCP action plan, which was adopted by council in July of 2021, kind of endorsed our existing OCP, and I think at that point, you know, we were going to leave it for some time and come back to that later at date and focus on other work. But this, this legislation led to significant reworking of our work plan. And we will get into some of the details of what they, that is, but Bill 44 established the need to come up with an interim housing needs report and establish a 20-year housing need. I'll be a bit more detailed later in the presentation on that. It also established the requirement to provide for that 20-year housing need in both the OCP and zoning bylaws, which is a dramatic shift in terms of the approach we do to long-range and development approvals. In addition to that, there was some changes with regards to the net requirements for public hearings. So an outcome, a potential outcome of this process will be pre-zoning significant amounts of property likely in our key growth centers. And there won't be a need to have public hearings on that, so this process, there's a lot of importance in terms of our approach to public engagement, because there'll be fewer opportunities in the future, should this be implemented for public hearings. Bill 47 introduced the concept of transient-oriented areas, which prescribed minimum allowable densities and heights in two areas in the district, in Fibs Exchange and that Capilano University, and the OCP update will need to accommodate that as well. Finally, in the spring of 2024, Bill 16 was introduced that delivered local governments many tools that they could use to implement the necessary things for complete communities. A couple of the ones highlighted here are inclusionary zoning and density bonusing, tools that can be used to deliver affordable housing. It also established the means to ensure tenant protection, which we currently do through policy. And in addition to that, there's opportunities to secure site-level infrastructure and transportation demand management at the building permit stage, which is currently wasn't possible prior to that legislation. And this, this is a key driver, all this legislation is a key driver for the OCP update project, which as Ms. Atva previously mentioned, needs to be completed by the end of 2025, so we're under a very tight timeline. So this project was introduced and supported by council in the summer last year, in July 15th. We established the scope for the project. It's a focus on housing and responding to the legislation. There's a significant amount of work, so you kind of wanted to be very clear in establishing the scope with the community to kind of keep some boundaries on what we would be able to effectively deliver in the time that we had. Staff then returned in September of last year with an engagement plan, which we initiated and has begun, and we will speak to further in terms of how we continue moving forward. And then in October of this year, council was presented with the housing needs report. And this interim housing needs report established both the five-year and the 20-year housing need, and the key number is at 22,369 units. And this is our 20-year housing need for the district, and this is what needs to be provided for in both the OCP and zoning bylaw. And this housing need was calculated using a provincially prescribed methodology. So this began an analysis for us, building off this number, looking at the capacity that existed within the current OCP, then also led to the question of how we would accommodate that and what was the best means to communicate that to council and the community. A key starting place for developing how we would approach that was looking at our existing 2011 official community plan. And the key item in that was the, the vision in the urban structure embedded for growth that was established in 2011. The original plan was in 2011 was to accommodate 10,000 units and about 75 to 9, that represented about 75 to 9% growth in four key growth centers connected by transit. And those four key growth centers are Lynn Valley, Lynn Creek, Lionsgate, Marine Drive, and Maplewood. The 2021 OCP action plan reaffirmed this OCP vision and urban structure, and council again supported that urban structure carrying forward into our approach to how we would accommodate the next 20 years of housing need that we must provide for as part of the legislative changes. Staff then you developed three scenarios. And as Ms. Atva mentioned, the intention here is not to kind of prescribe a specific solution, but present range of ideas and possibilities on how this community could accommodate and respond to the legislative requirement to accommodate the 20-year housing need. And so the first scenario looked at kind of concentrating growth within the existing boundaries of our centers, putting 90% of the growth in there, and this results in an emphasis on higher building forms. Scenario two looked at kind of maintaining those existing centers, but explored the idea of expanding some of the boundaries to kind of mitigate and decrease the intensity of the density that would need to be accommodated and to have a bit more of a mix of housing forms. And finally, the third scenario was looking at distributing growth, so having 75% of growth within our existing center, centers, but looking at distributing the growth more widely within the district. And I'll go into a bit more detail about all of these. You have kind of a visual representation across the top of a, kind of roughly what kind of the central theme of each of those scenarios is. Before I go into the details about all the scenarios, what you see here in terms of these series of maps that we're presenting is the, the purple areas is kind of the residential and commercial developable area within the urban containment boundary. The existing borders of the centers, the four key growth centers are the black lines around each of the centers. And then finally, the green lines represent frequent transit network. So you see this concept of connecting the four growth centers but with transit, and that's kind of a central pillar to why we have looked at utilizing this urban structure is that it is putting density in places where we have transit already and plans for future transit, where we've had the plans to expand infrastructure and accommodate the growth within that. So that is why it is relevant to continue with the urban structure that was established, because it builds off long-established plans to support that growth. So scenario one, as I mentioned earlier, is looking to concentrate growth, 90% of growth within the existing end centers. There was no expansion of the current boundaries for those centers. And this results in a higher and taller housing forms, because you're accommodating a density in a fairly limited form. And you'll see on the top of each of these maps, kind of a visual representation, as you kind of get into a darker purple, you'll see kind of some of the representative housing types or forms that you might see with those kind of densities. So you get a sense of where, what the implications of some of these scenarios are. This scenario kind of limited change to the established neighborhoods, kept it focused in the centers, and obviously continues to support and focus on supporting current and future transit investment. Scenario two, again, looks to accommodate 90% of the growth within centers, but expands the boundaries. And you'll see this, and I'll, again, later in the presentation, I will, will do a bit more of a closer focus on the centers, so you'll see some of the close-up implications of this. This results in a more gradual transition from low-density to high-density housing forms. And it integrates perhaps a bit better with the existing neighborhoods, but still maintains a focus on current and future transit investment. And the key question that this scenario we're trying to get at is, does the community want to consider expanding the center boundaries to accommodate our 20-year housing need? Scenario three, look to distribute growth a bit more widely. So here you're seeing 75% of that future housing need provided for within the centers, and then 25 outside, a growth along corridors and other areas, such as, you know, introducing low-rise apartment forms and townhouse forms in Edgemont, Queensdale, Parkgate, and also along some of the key corridors outside of the existing frequent transit network, such as the East 29th, the Lynn Valley Road corridor, Mount Seymour and West Queens Road as well. It also introduces the possibility of allowing for four to six units in established neighborhoods. And so looking to maybe going a bit beyond the current forms in terms of a coach house suite and a single-family dwelling and in areas where it's appropriate. These are just some examples of possible areas that we might want to consider that. That's another key question that this scenario poses is, do we want to consider more growth outside of our four key growth centers? And do we want to consider implementing in some select areas, four to six units in established neighborhoods? This scenario kind of presents a wider distribution of growth and more variety of housing forms. Now, this is a lot of detail and a lot to take in. There's a lot of different permutations and ideas, but again, as Ms. Atva mentioned, we're not looking to make a decision on one scenario or one specific element or specific outcomes, but we're just looking to introduce a range of possibilities to facilitate a community conversation and look to kind of hear back from the community what they would like to see in terms of approaches to accommodate and provide for that 20-year housing need. So here we're looking in at some of the four key growth centers, and you can see here what the differences are in some of the scenarios. Scenario one sees that very much intense growth within the existing boundary for the center in Lionsgate Marine Drive to support transit, but you have very distinct forms there. Scenario two, as you can see in the middle, explores the idea of expanding those boundaries both to the north and south of Marine Drive. And this results in, you know, a similar level of units accommodated there, but in slightly less density, dense forms of housing. And then finally, when the distributed growth scenario, you see less, less density into that area because it's accommodated in other areas within the district. Similarly, again, with Lynn Valley, you see the concentrated growth on the left-hand side. You see the exploration of an expanded town center with growth outside of the existing town center boundaries focused along Lynn Valley Drive, and then again on Mountain Highway. Lynn Creek is a bit more of a challenging center in terms of once we got into the other scenarios, because it's very constrained by the Squamish Nations, City of North Vancouver on either side, and then industrial lands or the highway to the north and south. So there was limited opportunities in terms of actually expanding the centers here. But we did see an exploration of looking at the, the commercial designation for the site that contains the Canadian Tire, looking at maybe introducing a mixed-use forms there as well in terms of housing. And you see the, the different permutations that could play out possibly under either, any of the scenarios. And similarly, for Maplewood, a constrained center because of geography with the industrial lands to the south, the Mount Seymour Parkway to the north, the river on the western portion, and then future ATR lands on the east. So again, not a lot of opportunities to expand the center here, so for both scenario one and two, you see similar density ideas presented there. And then in the distributed growth model, you see a slight reduction in the density that would need need to be allocated to that area to provide for the housing need. So the intention is to bring these scenarios to the public and engage in a, in an extensive public engagement process. We're targeting to do this in April to fit the timeline, which I will come back to in a moment. And there'll be a series of engagement opportunities that we are proposing to conduct. First of all, there'll be a series of in-person engagement opportunities at various locations around the district, and we will also be conducting pop-up events to help drive engagement and bring hopefully more people to participate either in the in-person engagements or participate digitally. We'll be hosting a series of virtual engagement sessions that'll be available online. In addition, we're going to be undertaking a survey to gauge what people's priorities are and to quantitatively be able to present some of the outcomes that we've heard and what the community desires. And we've also been undertaking targeted outreach. We've had ongoing and early conversations with our First Nation partners, bringing them, looking to inform them of what we are trying to do and getting a better understanding of what their needs are. That work will continue. We also have developed relationships with key implementation partners, such as the school district, the MBRC, the libraries, people, the groups and organizations we feel who will be directly impacted by this growth. We've sought to have early and ongoing engagement with them to, one, make sure they're aware of our plans, but also to make sure that we have that relationship to work effectively with them to accommodate the growth and meet their needs as well. We also have a series of key interest holders, a long list of various groups and organizations that operate or impact the district, and we will be looking to engage with them and bring them in to make sure that any concerns or issues they have are considered as part of this work as well. And finally, we've had ongoing conversations with our North Shore municipal partners. Obviously, they, they have the same legislation impacting them, and they are undertaking and responding to that in their own ways. But we need to work together, one, to deliver on transit investment, but also we do have shared borders with them and want to ensure that we are coordinating our land use intentions with them so that it all works together as most, as effectively as possible. And the intention then of this engagement would be to bring everything we heard back to council and help inform what would be kind of what we're calling a final refined scenario. And the intention is early this summer to bring that back to council for endorsement, and that then would be turned into bylaws, which would be brought back to council in the fall for adoption in order to meet our legislative deadline of December 31st, 2025. In addition to this engagement work, staff will be continuing to develop and utilize some of those Bill 16 tools I mentioned earlier. We'll be looking at translating our current tenant protection policy and turning that into a bylaw form so that it'll be implementable outside of a rezoning process to ensure that tenant protections are provided for, and there might be some opportunities in terms of strengthening the policy as well. We're also actively working on looking at considering how to implement inclusionary zoning for affordable housing. So this is a tool where you can put in a certain percentage or other type of affordable measure into the zoning. So regardless, so even if an applicant or a developer were looking to develop a site, it'd be very transparent in terms of the requirements necessary to deliver affordable housing in the district. Transportation is a significant issue on the North Shore. I'm sure everyone here is very well aware of that. And, you know, the, the transportation network has challenges as it is right now. But the, the only real solution to addressing our transportation needs is through further transit and supporting transit investment. So, you know, continuing with the urban structure and placing our, providing for our 20-year housing need predominantly in those areas will support the ongoing conversations around further transit investment for the North Shore. Evidently, and obviously, the senior level governments will need to step up and support that the work we're doing in terms of providing the land use and the housing, but they'll need to provide some dollars to support and, and implement further transit investment to help address the significant transportation concerns that exist on the North Shore. And finally, another piece of ongoing work that we will also be consulting on in April is looking at simplifying single-family zoning. We currently have, I think, around approximately 19 single-family zones, so we'll be looking to rationalize those. We also be looking at supporting further abilities to develop coach houses on where there's an existing home, so looking at some of the FAR calculations and some of the details around that. And then finally, looking at addressing some of the ongoing stormwater management issues related to basements, and so looking at playing around or varying height requirements in order to encourage basements coming out of the ground. One, to create more livable suites, but also to help mitigate some of the stormwater concerns that we have with basements in the ground. So this is a timeline that we've presented and created and adjusted slightly since last July. We're, we're moving forward. We're finished phase one of the engagement process of building awareness. We're now about to move into phase two, gathering some feedback on these scenarios. And the intention would be, as I mentioned earlier, to return to council early this summer with a refined scenario for council's support to take forward and turn into bylaws. And then, you know, as we refine that approach and draft the bylaws, those will be brought back in the fall to begin the adoption process to meet our dead legislative deadline of December 31st, 2025. And so that leads to the option for, before you tonight, for consideration to direct staff to, to undertake this public engagement that we've described it within the report, and the And those, that engagement would be based on the scenarios presented here tonight. Happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So why don't we move the staff recommendation just to get it on the floor for discussion? I'll be moving as your second or second by council back. Just my own comments on it and you know, the, there's this scenario. Let's get too much into the weeds. I get, I get that the whole point is to put the options out there, see what the public comes back with. But scenario two, I, I think that maybe we should be less specific about which town centers and, and maybe have a second question as to which town centers should be identified. And the reason why I say that is that I'd have a challenge with Lynn Valley being identified for more right now. And the reason being, we don't actually have transit committed to from TransLink up to for frequent transit network up to Lynn Valley. The, what was going to be the R nine has not been prioritized by Metro Vancouver at this point, whereas the, the BRT through the Marine Drive corridor in the old R two, two thirty-nine route is being prioritized by Metro Vancouver, which would encapsulate both the Sealand neighborhood and the Cap and Marine neighborhood as being supported by a frequent transit network in the medium term. And so I would tend to say that if I was going to expand growth centers, I'd be doing it along that corridor because that's where we have the only commitment for transit coming to the North Shore at this time. In fact, if we don't get additional funding for TransLink, we'll be rationalizing and contracting services, which, which, you know, the area that is, is most likely to still be supported with core support would be that corridor, the R two corridor. So I, while I, I, I do think we need to talk about expanding the town centers, I, I just, I wouldn't prioritize Lynn Valley over Sealand and Cap and Marine. I like what I saw in the presentation about contemplating a potential change at Lionsgate Marine Drive as a corridor. I, I think we're going to have to address the issue of expanding that space. Obviously, we've, we've had a number of developments that have come forward on the eastern edge of that development. It was Sealand was originally going to be hemmed in by Cap and Marine and then extends over to Garden and then potentially other areas in there. I think there's been less resistance to changes in the housing form in that area because it is relatively well supported with transit. And so I think that should be prioritized. I just think it's easier to deliver proper infrastructure and support between the bridges and below the highway. Lynn Valley has taken on a lot in the town center space, but there's actually already a lot of underutilized OCP density space that projects haven't come forward for yet within the town center. Cause we, we went all the way down to twenty-seventh, but also below twenty-seventh, all the way down to the park when we expanded sort of the Lynn Valley area. And so I, I, I don't know that we need to expand that center anymore. There's a lot of latent density that is sitting in the already high density space up there. So, so I don't see a scenario that quite reflects that. Maybe we could be less prescriptive in scenario two and, and look at, you know, combination of the different town centers being targeted. Because I, I do think it's critically important for us to affirm that the transit dollars that are going to come forward for frequent transit network in our community are going to be in that R two corridor. So that would be my initial comments on it, but I generally support the, the principles here. I, I, I do think that we have to have this discussion with the community. I will just, if I can go to my second two minutes, that'd be appreciated. I would say how we present this when it actually comes up as the OCP matters. And so the, the annual report, we make a very clear distinction between statutory and the narrative. And, and, and the statutory, we are required to report this. We're required to present this material to the community. And then the other side is, these are all the things where we get to come up with the vision. We get to come up with how we want the community to, to go forward. I think we have to make that same distinction in the OCP where this is what we're required to put in the OCP, just like you do with the annual report and have that broken out from, this is where we get to all have a, a say in, in the vision of the community going forward. So that it's meaningful and material to the people that are giving their input into what can be considered in the OCP going forward. So sorry to make that additional comment, but I, I generally support the, the approach. I just think that Cap and Marine and Sealand is where we're going to get the transit improvements. So we should probably consider that in the options. Counselor Ma. Actually, sorry, counselor back seconded the matter. Counselor back.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for all the work you guys are doing. I recognize how, how much of a massive undertaking this is for everyone. So thank you very much and for, for taking it and breaking it down. And I think with a very clear presentation. I just want to say that I do agree with the way we're presenting the three scenarios. And I think it's important to note that there's, there's going to probably be a combination of them that work or end up, you know, forming the updated OCP. I agree with, you know, the comments of the mayor, Lynn Valley specifically, there's, there's a lot of capacity there that has not been utilized yet, although I still think there's potentially room for some lower form of multifamily housing, but I look forward to the, you know, the community feedback on this. One of the things I want to point out is that with, within our key growth centers, we've seen a lot of housing. We haven't seen the sort of businesses and services to create that sort of vibrancy in that complete community. And I think that's where as much as our OCP I think is, is a solid one, and certainly the review of the OCP last term pointed to that. I think we've, we still haven't seen those, some of those town centers, Lionsgate and Lynn Creek in particular, really come to life because they're lacking the sort of variety of businesses, services. In some cases, public spaces not being activated that really make them feel like livable neighborhoods rather than just clusters of housing. So I hope that with this OCP update, we're really looking at that whole picture of what these neighborhoods, what we want them to look like. And if we're expanding a town center, then what are some of those little businesses that should be allowed to open in those neighborhoods as well and really, you know, promoted actively within that? With Lynn Creek in particular, I mean, I, I, I'm concerned about the light industrial in that area. So if we're talking about expanding, you mentioned that Canadian Tire property, I would be concerned about the potential impact on the, the light industrial area that we have there. And then I'm just going to touch on a few points and, and maybe I'll call, I'll take another turn, but in terms of the engagement, this is such an important piece for the community to really weigh in on more than ever, I would say. So you know, making sure that we're out in the neighborhoods, I see we're planning to do the pop-ups and, and being where people are, but I think that's really important with this. In terms of the focused discussions with First Nations, I hope that's really an ongoing two-way conversation so that we can support them with, you know, the developments that they're, you know, significant developments that are, they're planning adjacent to some of these town centers and how we can really make those work together. I think this is the perfect opportunity to do that. So you know, I hope that that's really being considered and how those conversations go. But yeah, just at, at this level, I support, you know, the options going out like this. And I've got some more thoughts that I'll just listen to the others first. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ma.
Thank you. Good work, Jason and Jessica. I too like the format of the report. I was going to make a comment about being required to do this, but I'll, I'll save that. Got a couple of questions. In terms of the scenarios, is it based on a snapshot of what's there now, your best guess? To take into account potential investments in, in transit and mobility infrastructure that's being considered by TransLink because that's as far as I know, it's not confirmed. So I'm just trying to understand, how do you make decisions when it might be predicated on more transportation along a certain corridor, but that's decisions five years away. I'm just trying to understand how you're going to approach that.
Yes, through the chair, if I may respond, I'll just bring up a, a chart that was in the, the report as well. It's not in this one. I can't be able to do it. There is a chart in, in the report that outlines. Start here. It's on page one fifty-six of the agenda.
Your two?
Yes.
Figure one that has a lot of development in.
Yeah.
Certain corridor.
So what, what this shows, starting from the bottom, the dark blue colors are the existing and approved developments that exist for all the centers. And you'll note under scenario two for both Lionsgate and Lynn Valley that's slightly larger. And that simply reflects the fact that it's an expanded center. So it's a larger area that's captured in terms of the existing development. So that's what's kind of seeing that little bump up in those two centers under scenario two. But with regards to the complex, you know, decisions is yes, we, we, we have to meet this legislative deadline. So we are doing our best to put the growth in the right place. I think we are building on a longstanding urban structure with regards to putting growth where there has been some transit investment to date. And from the conversations that we're all aware of, the ongoing future transit investment with regards to BRT and some future technology to be determined at this point. But one of the assumptions that we did in terms of made in terms of developing the scenarios was that the transit investment would be taking place in the R two corridor as the mayor alluded to. But again, we have to deal with the uncertainties and the reality that we are, you know, there are other partners. We don't have the dollars to deliver that transit investment. And, you know, we will do our bit and meet our legislative requirements. But we, I think in turn would be looking for the province and the federal government to support our, our communities in terms of providing the dollars to deliver that much needed transit.
A second question. I realize that the scenario maps may be for illustrative purposes. But when I look under the the maps, especially around Cap U, they don't seem to really change even under scenario three. And I think in the reports, it talks about there is maybe untapped potential at around the Cap U TOA, but it's not a town center. So can you just speak to the, about the potential around Cap U?
Through your worship to Counselor Ma. So in our current OCP, the area that comprises Capilano University Transit Oriented Area. So it's not previously envisioned or currently envisioned to accommodate rapid growth to the extent that the legislate, the current legislation permits. And so new growth in this area currently right now is townhouses, student dormitories and limited apartments. This area has several existing challenges that need to be further analyzed, including the road network or emergency access, a utility servicing is a big one and, and school capacities at Lynnmore Elementary. So in our, in our land use scenarios, we aren't showing them as higher density, even though there might be some capacity, but that's just because we require further analysis to give, just given the timelines we have. But landlords and developers are welcome to still apply for an OCP amendment or rezoning to achieve those legislated densities and heights, but at the moment we're not showing them as higher density.
I, I just think there's, I'm actually meeting with a, a Paul Dangerfield in a couple of weeks about housing and, you know, it's just the idea that, you know, Cap used a great school and you know, it's kind of a day campus, but if it had student housing, it, it, it could evolve and be a a lot more for a student experience, but we'll leave that for now. A, a final question. The, the city of Northan is basically creating a great street up Longstale. And when I look at these maps, I, I see Queensdale. So other than under scenario three, is the additional capacity of Queensdale included in your analysis?
Through the chair. When we developed scenario three, yes, we did add additional capacity and there is current capacity there under the OCP. So that, that was, you know, scenario three was looking to distribute growth. So there was some kind of allocation of density in Queensdale and also along Queens and West Twenty-Ninth. So kind of all in that kind of node, shall we say? But these are the kind of questions and ideas that we would like to kind of hear from council and in the community when we go to engage to kind of, you know, come back and be able to say, okay, this is what we've heard in terms of the different options and, and kind of present a possible way forward in terms of how we could accommodate that growth.
I, I just see the potential given, you know, the Harry Jerome Rec Center is coming up there, like that whole area is just going to be such a desirable place. It's closer to freeway. I'm not sure if transit will get up there, but I'm glad it's on your radar. This is my final comment. I think you mentioned something about coach houses earlier. So I'm, I'm, I think I heard that, you know, there might be some look at the FSR being considered to make coach houses more feasible. Like, you know, coach houses on their own won't meet the requirement of the twenty-two thousand plus, but I, I think they will contribute in a way that would be acceptable to a community that's soft density. So I'm glad you're looking at that. And you know, as you mentioned in your report, Jason, there's going to be a lot of trade-offs when it comes back to council. But I'm, I'm glad we're getting public input and I want to thank the two of you and your team and your consultant in advance. Cause if you're going to come back before spring break or sorry, summer break, that's a lot of work. So good luck with that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you very much for this report. I really enjoyed reading it and the consultant's report, I thought laid things out very clearly for me to understand. And I really appreciated that. Thank you for all your hard work on it. Scenarios, I'm going to comment on each of these scenarios now, even though I know we're not deciding on it. This is kind of my early take. I see that scenario one and two are very similar and both call for ninety percent of all new growth to be concentrated to existing town centers. Scenario two just expands the radius surrounding the town centers basically. And I have some concerns about that. Unprecedented growth presents significant transportation infrastructure challenges as the mayor has mentioned. And adding even more density to centers where people are already experiencing traffic congestion and with a lack of transit services doesn't seem like the right approach, at least for the short term. And I, this is the problem with the OCP is we're talking 20 years out and, and things could be looking so differently in, I'm going to say the next decade. I'm also concerned with those scenarios about losing older buildings that are currently providing most of the affordable housing here. And I'm worried about displacing those tenants to make way for density. I'm also worried about construction fatigue in some communities where the sound of buildings going up has been non-stop for years already. So scenario three, I favor because it provides for a little more growth outside the four centers, but it still provides for most of the growth seventy-five to ninety percent in those four centers. So what does that look like? I, I wonder if you could go back to that slide where you've got scenario three and the increased density. Yes, I think that's it. So and there was another one as well that I think was sort of similar. At any rate, yeah, is that going to be on the public engagement? The the, like, are you going to be able to blow those up more or say it could possibly be here and show? I don't know, Edgemont, just throwing that out there, you know, like, so that people have a better idea of what they're taught, what they're, what we mean by this scenario and spreading density around.
That, that's great feedback and it is a challenge when we are putting this presentation together to in particular for this scenario, because, you know, it is the emphasis is on the change out of the centers. So it's hard to capture in a brief presentation, but certainly that's great feedback and a question we are wrestling with in terms of the engagement is, you know, how do you really lay that out effectively so that people can really gauge the trade-offs and the implications of all the scenarios? So thank you for that.
Yeah, because I think some Yeah, because I think some communities will favor it and some won't. And so hopefully we'll get lots of feedback during the engagement process on that. And I'm assuming as well that you could be overlaying onto the maps. Where the low density multifamily housing. Could be also like where people can build four to six units on their single family home where that could be showing up.
Yeah, I mean, this was kind of a very kind of like conceptual presentation of that, but I think, you know, there was extensive conversations. You know, last spring, as we led to the changes in June that council implemented. So, you know, we want to kind of look forward and kind of propose and put out there for conversation areas that work in terms of the infrastructure. And all the necessary things to support those changes. So that will certainly be a consideration in terms of how we characterize those opportunities for consideration.
So very happy to hear about inclusionary zoning for affordable housing. Which requires a percent of of units in a new development to be affordable. And so could that inclusionary zoning potentially be part of any of these scenarios?
Absolutely. I I think as we move to this model that's being described to us where we prezone, that's that we, you know, it's. It's critical that we be able to provide affordable housing that is now currently negotiated through a rezoning process. So. Inclusionary zoning is one tool that we can utilize to ensure that we deliver that outside of a rezoning process. So. Under any scenario, that will be part of the consideration for sure.
And one final question was. In regards to the scenarios, is there any possibility of including. Areas that haven't been zoned residential? And then I'm thinking, just for example. South of Marine Drive on on Pemberton, where the Lloyd Street project, housing project is is going up. Is there any reason why we couldn't build up more residential housing in that area?
Our approach in in developing the scenarios was not to touch industrial lands. So those industrial. Those are industrial lands predominantly along that Pemberton corridor. So we are not. We we consciously made a choice not to propose any residential housing in the industrial areas.
Is that something that that is a possibility, though, if it was the will of council?
Absolutely. If it was the will of council, we could do that. That that's a choice you have control over the land use, but, you know, there there's a longstanding policy. Approach, you know, in the economic development strategy, in our current OCP and in our response to the regional growth strategy. Around protecting industrial lands. So while we're certainly, if council directs us to do that, we will, we will certainly consider that. But at at the time, at this point, we are respecting longstanding policies around not introducing residential uses into industrial.
I understand that. Is there any middle ground wiggle room in terms of. A zoning so that it's industrial and residential? Because what we're starting to see in other communities is buildings going up that, you know, that have both in them. That have, you know. Commercial space for the first number of floors and and residential space for for more floors.
Through your worship to Councilor Pope, we do have a land use designation that is, I guess, hybrid of. Residential and small artisanal light industrial. But it has not been tested yet. It hasn't been developed. So. As Jason said, we could consider it if that was the direction from council and the public in the future. But again, it's. We haven't tested whether that's feasible and it hasn't been shown to date that it is feasible.
Okay, thank you very much.
LI or what's the designation?
Um, I believe LI A.
Light industrial.
Artisanal light.
We talked about it for the east side of Maplewood. But it's not actually in place. Counselor Forbes.
Worship. I have a lot to say about a lot of this, but I will hold that till we get the public involved. Speaking of which, I just wanted to ask you. Why do we always try to gather feedback from the public in March and April? That those are the worst, those are the worst months to get the amount of feedback that the OCP. I mean, in two thousand and eleven, hundreds, thousands, little vignettes, people came out in droves. That's how important the OCP is to them. And I I'm frustrated every time I see gathered feedback in March and April. Is there any way we can change that or expand that timeline? I I know you're trying to have everything done by the end of the year and I realize that's hard. And I didn't say thank you upfront, but thank you for the work you're doing. Could you do a little more? Can we do something about that? Because I just. March and April are a terrible time to have input.
It is is a challenging timeline generally that we're dealing with in terms of the legislative deadline. So, you know, when we were developing this project, we backed out. You know, what the various milestones that we would need in terms of developing the project. And some of the timelines that we'd need, just in terms of, you know, in terms of us being able to process what we hear at public engagement. Turn that around and deliver it as a refined scenario. It was going to take, you know, we gauged the amount of time. So it kind of really led to very limited windows that we had, because, you know, we. Put a lot of work in just to delivering the scenarios for here at this point in February. It really didn't leave us a lot of flexibility with that regard. You know, we are contemplating additional engagement of beyond that. Unfortunately, you know, given the timing again, you know. Once we have that refined scenario, we're into the summer, which from what I've heard. Organizationally, that is not a time when we want to be doing public consultations during the summer. So working with the constraints that we had in terms of the timeline, March and April was 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 the time that we were able to deliver the engagement.
Well, I just have to say that I'm a little frustrated that the build awareness has five months allocated to it. And the gathering of feedback has to, the analysis of engagement, which involves your time, is only two. And then it comes back in July to September. And then September to October is to publicize and promote. But you want us to, you want council to approve whatever scenario before summer break.
No, well, we want you to endorse a a scenario to give us something to turn into bylaws and that we would then deliver in.
Which is essentially, we give our approval to which scenario and that'll happen before we go on break at the end of July. Can we not squeeze another month in there for the public somewhere? I understand and I appreciate how much work this is. I really do.
Yeah. No, I I I think at the staff level, we've had conversations around how we could do. More and and meaningful engagement. So that is something we will continue to to work on and we'll, you know. Look at kind of the options, given the timing we will have about how we can kind of in that phase three of the engagement process. Provide more opportunities for meaningful input into the plan before council has to fake face a decision on adoption.
If he did March, April, May.
Intervene there a little bit. So if August is off the table, July is off the table, December is off the table. Well, it's summer break for people. It's a hard time for people to come in. And and so adding. Two more months, we wouldn't be able to get done the consultation we need to get done if we were. Only concentrating in September to November and maybe a little bit of February. So it, we, I I get that it's not ideal. It's better than the alternatives.
Okay. In force to talk about something else. There's an, there's another problem that I have consistently, and that is, how do you define affordable housing? If we say we're, if we do inclusionary zoning and we say ten or twenty percent has to be. Housing, what does affordable housing mean?
Well, the the OCP introduces the the notion of a continuum. So there's a range of affordable housing. So. You know, as kind of preliminary work, we were doing some economic analysis and that is a legislative requirement for inclusionary zoning is that you have an accompanying. Economic analysis to say that this is, this is feasible and realistic in terms of the demands you're making. So that will be part of the analysis that we will be bringing back to council around, you know, this is what we can deliver. Realistically, given the economic conditions that we're looking at in terms of affordable housing. So that that will certainly deliver a part of the continuum, but it won't, won't necessarily deliver the full range of the continuum. That's where we'll utilize, you know, the other tools that we've done in the district in terms of our own land partnerships with BC Housing. And other opportunities to deliver affordable housing. I noticed Mr. Milburn has his hand up as well.
Much, Merle, just to note, council has in the past, on a case by case basis, through the rezoning process. And through the approval housing agreements, decided the level of affordability that's appropriate. And also through the allocation of its lands through various grants and partnerships with BC Housing. In the future, what we'll be recommending is an inclusionary zoning. Where council will predefined the level of affordability, the types of units, the types of clientele that will be appropriate for those units. Across the community. So council will be selective and it'll be based on the feasibility analysis that Mr. Smith mentions. So instead of a case by case basis, council will be predefined it through inclusionary zoning, if you choose to adopt inclusionary zoning by law.
Thank you, Mr. Milburn. That answers what my next question was going to be. So thank you. On page one fifty seven, third paragraph from the bottom, it says, through the required economic analysis, a range of affordable units is being tested. And you go a little bit further farther down and it says. And it says, a range of affordable tenure, affordable level, price or rent. And term for which affordability must be maintained or are also examined. So does that mean if we zone an inclusionary area with a certain criteria for affordable? Does that mean it's only good for a certain term or it's good in perpetuity?
I mean, I I think we're at the early days in terms of developing kind of the fine grain details on how we would actually implement inclusionary zoning. But I would, I would suspect that it will likely mirror the current process that we have in terms of attaching a housing agreement. Onto the property and to deliver that affordable housing. So that will be kind of the bridge between the zoning to what actually secures the housing. For the terms negotiated as part of that.
Good to know. Thank you. I won't give my preference on which scenario, but I do agree with the mayor that maybe they shouldn't be so perscript, perscript, perscriptive. That you allow and mention in whatever your presentations, that there can be a combination. So I would really like to see that so that people feel they have an option. They don't have to just do one, two or three. There could be a little bit of two and some three. Whatever, just if you can make highlight that to them, there's some give there, some leeway. And I I noticed, I guess it's in the. Distribution growth scenario three, that you are following the old OCP that you are following. I mean, we're talking a lot about transportation because that's so important. But we had in the original OCP, it talked about arterial, arterials being built out. Bro houses, townhouses, whatever. So scenario three would be where that type of thing would happen. Would it be with the arterials being built out?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good report.
Thank you. Counselor Pope, I believe you've spoken full time. Is there a specific question that would help you make a decision on this? Okay.
It's just on the question of the TOAs. I didn't really understand why the. Like, we have the TOAs going in zones in Capilano U and at FIBS Exchange. But are those numbers not of anticipated development and capacity there? Are they not included? In any of this or the housing needs report?
The housing needs report was, would not have factored in specific development rights. That's more kind of projections and kind of. Census level data. And that's kind of relatable across the province because every municipality has housing needs report. With regards to the TOA and how they factored into the analysis. We we based our analysis off the existing OCP capacity and what we would need to accommodate that. And so when we were looking at Lynn Creek, some of the land use. You know, density increases we were contemplating there reflected the reality that, you know, part of Lynn Creek is in the TOA for FIBS Exchange. And those have some minimum prescribed densities and heights. So that that would be factor into some of that in that figure two. In terms of that additional capacity, that's where that number would be reflected. I mean, with regards to Capilano, I don't think we necessarily. Then the density as Ms. Lee spoke to earlier was not necessarily included in terms of our capacity analysis. Because we haven't made the OCP designations because of some of the unique circumstances for that TOA. Does that answer your question?
May provoke further questions. But I I think the point is the point that you're getting at is, I mean, there's a campus master plan there that does contemplate two thousand units. Of additional staff, student and faculty housing in in that space. There's about six hundred underway right now. And so it is an area of significant growth in the district, but it's it's the lightest color on your on your display there. So. So it's a fair question that, you know, is that contemplated or not in the TOA? Or is that a special study? Is that something different that's going to come along in the discussion? I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I I do think we need to address that specifically in terms of that, the, what you're seeing there is much of the land on the TOA is actually an institutional land. So it's not picked up in our analysis on on residential development. But we acknowledge the reality that, yes, those have. The TOA designation, you know, has prescribed densities that supersede our regulations. So it's there. And that we should include that in terms of our analysis.
In terms of engagement, I I think that's a critical piece that that people should be aware of when they're looking at. Where where all this different, all these different hundreds of units are going to go. If they can know that, you know, well, six hundred, at least a thousand are going in up at Cap U. Alleviates the other areas from, yeah.
That's fair. Counselor Forbes.
Thank you. Just one question. If we do all this by December. This year and we've got everything figured out. Is there ever a chance to come back and change it again? Like the OCP used to be every five years it was supposed to review. So if we zone a certain way in a certain area and then things change. And we don't get the transportation where we're supposed to. Can we come back and redo?
Yes, and the legislation prescribes that we, one in twenty twenty eight. Do a new housing needs report that'll have an updated twenty year housing need. And then correspondingly, the next year, we will need to update our OCP and zoning bylaws to provide for that twenty year housing need. So. The legislation now legislates those regular check ins on that. And outside of those times, I think council would be able to. You know, amend the OCP and zoning designations. But again, I think there'll be a bit of a dance because you always need to satisfy the need of providing for that twenty year housing need. So. If you take density away, you will need to find another place to accommodate or provide for it. And so that that'll be part of the the, what we will need to do in terms of responding to the engagement and council comments is. You know, if we don't want to put additional growth, shall we say, in Lynn Valley, well, where are we going to provide for that outside of Lynn Valley if we don't want to put it there? So, you know, you, yes, you can take it away, but then you have to put it back in somewhere else. So that'll be part of the trade offs. That we're looking at presenting to the public and to council as we move forward on this.
I understand that. At least there's some flexibility there, though. I mean, sort of a learn as we go and then maybe we might want to change some.
Definitely.
Thank you.
All right. Fantastic. So thank you very much for the presentation. This item has been moved and seconded. Prepared to call the question on the motion, which is the staff recommendation. Call question, all in favor? Contrary minded, motion is carried. Thank you very much. All other items have been addressed already, either through consent agenda or through the work that we've we've concluded this evening. I will. Say we're done early enough, the regular business to have an opportunity for reports. So I'll check in with the CEO. Do you have any reports? with the C E O, do you have any reports that you'd like to make at this time? Okay, I don't have any reports that I'd like to make. Would any member of council like to make a report at this time? Counselor Pope.
Hurt tonight to remind everyone that Wednesday is pink shirt day. Um, so wear your pinkness.
I'll have to, my only pink shirt is in getting cleaned right now. Figure that one out. Thank you very much. Hey, any other reports from council? Counselor Forbes.
I just wanted to say that Councilor Ma and myself attended the North Van Can presentation by Mr. Danny Look. And it was well received and had very interesting comments that were very fruitful, I think. And I just wanted to say it went really well.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. I don't see any other uh reports from council. So having completed the business of this evening's meeting, I'll accept adjournments accepted from Counselor Back. Uh, thank you for filling in with Counselor Mary not here. Not what she's usually on, Johnny on the spot on that. Uh, thank you very much to uh staff for their preparation of the reports for our consideration this evening. Thank you, members of the, members of the public for coming out. And thank you, council, for your deliberations. Everybody have a fantastic night.